Why we need IT. The meeting was called to order at 7:18. We had a motion from Christina to approve the minutes and I think a second from Sharon.
But then there was some discussion, yeah.
Yeah.
Second before the discussion. So do we have a second?
Okay, a second, but yes, I have edits.
Okay, yes. Go ahead, Sharon. Corrections?
Sure. Just if we could update the spelling of my name throughout the minutes. It's Benante, B double A, N A N T E. Page one, under acceptance of the minutes, replace my name where it says Ms. Benante moved to accept the minutes to Yvonne Zuko. Page two, I think there's a lot of things missing from that, but I did not. It says Ms. Benante suggested that the wording be such and so on. That whole little paragraph wasn't me. I don't know who else said that. But it wasn't me and I don't want my name attached to that. Page four. Please remove my name from the nominating committee. Page five, replace my name under the agenda review committee with Shannon Giandurko. That's it for me.
Okay. Anyone else have any corrections? Claudia?
Yeah, sorry, my name was also misspelled, at least at the top. I need to double check the. Whoops. Sorry. In attendance, it's Werman, W E R M A N, Connor, C O N N O R.
Okay.
And that's also, in fact, the acceptance of the minutes, I had also noted that, so that's.
I remember that issue last time.
Yeah. I mean, we can take out the Werman. It is correct, I think, in some of the other places. Connor is fine, but I just want it spelled correctly.
Okay, anything else? I see Christina has her hand raised if you don't have others.
I don't think so.
Christina? You're on mute.
There we go. Regarding the minutes, I actually, after hearing Sharon, I just took another quick glance and there are, and now I lost it. There's one statement, I don't, it's fine if it's attributed to me, but I, I don't remember saying this only because I appreciated hearing the definition of intersectionality again. I've used it, but not completely.
Jasmine? Jasmine, was it you?
No, I thought it was Sarah, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
She did speak at the beginning.
So replace Christina talking about the definition of intersectionality with Sarah Garcia. Sorry, I'm still learning everyone's names. I apologize. Okay, anything else?
I'm sure it's hard also, I just acknowledged to the, to the folks taking the minutes. It's difficult on a Zoom call, I'm sure, trying to keep voices and names and everything correct, but thank you for making those corrections.
And whoever is here taking the minutes, if you need us to slow down or repeat something or say you said something, please feel free to unmute yourself and say so. We are happy to work with you. Okay, any other corrections? Okay, all in favor of approving the March 21 minutes as corrected?
Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, we're good to go. The next item on the agenda is the introduction of new staff, which, because I thought this meeting was at 7:30, I'm not properly prepared for. But we have new staff pepper. Welcome, Michelle Woods Matthews. She just started as the city's new communications director. She also has a history of working with NARL and Planned Parenthood, so she's a great fit for us and we're very lucky to have her. Michelle, over to you.
Thanks, yeah, so nice to meet you guys virtually. I hope to meet you in person soon too. Excited to work with you and as Anna was saying, I worked at NARL, which was Virginia Planned Parenthood of Metropolitan Washington, where we, we worked with, with legislation advocacy work within Maryland, DC and Virginia. And was also on the Commission of Women in Virginia for a brief period. And yeah, I'm learning about everything that's related to Norwalk. So I just, I was in DC for about 10 years and I moved to West Hartford a year and a half ago. So I just moved to Norwalk about a few weeks ago. So things are brand new, so concepts, information, anything you want to share with me that's, you know, related to what we're doing or not, please feel free, because I, I'm here to learn and to help you all. And, and I know we have a lot of ideas in common and I'm here to support you most importantly. So looking forward to, to supporting you.
We're very glad to have you and also it's great to have someone who's in the city because they'll be more aware of things that are going on in the city that we may be able to be useful on, so looking forward to that as well, although I know when you first start. Okay, oh, thanks Claudia. Claudia just put the agenda in the minute, so I can actually navigate to do the other things we need to get done. The next of which is public comment, which we got an email right before the meeting asking us to read a letter into public comment. Um. I think some of us already got this last time, so some of this is going to be a bit redundant, but it's public comment. What's not on the agenda, we're not going to vote on tonight and there's a process for that. So. One, can this commission include a public comment section at the beginning or end of its meetings similar to the process followed by the common council? Since the 1990s, women have a lot to say. Two, I ask that the commission consider the adoption of a goal of 50% appointment equity. All boards, committees and agendas should have a goal of minimum 50% gender equity, given the current female population in Norwalk. As one of its first missions, can this commission create a gender equality equity list of number of women on each board, et cetera? Can your commission start and ensure that the BET Board of Estimant and Taxation selects women to fill at least the next three vacancies? There is currently one seat vacant where after Sherri Brown was elected to the Board of Education, one female on this important board is still not enough. There are similar gender imbalances on the Harbor Shelfish Commissions and Pension Board and additional female seats needed on the Important Planning and Zoning Commission. Part of the issue is the manner that the city and council conducts its outreach in advertising the vacancies unlike other towns. Norwalk does not publicly announce vacancies in the news and on social media. This is due to many reasons that this commission can help on. Gender sensitivity training for many women, it is difficult to feel heard at meetings and be given a place at the table. Norwalk has made great strides in related to its staff hiring processes, but the volunteer boards and commissions and other officials often reflect gender-based beliefs from their backgrounds at times representative of sexist traditions. I can give you several examples of events, of times when women speaking at select Norwalk meetings have been made to feel less than or ignored. In addition, women who speak up are treated much more harshly than men who speak up. I would be happy to present those examples and offer positive solutions to improve the situation at a future, future meeting. Events, I hardly advocate that this commission enhances its work with an outreach, a series of outreach events such as listening sessions. There are many opportunities to elevate this issue beyond norms mentioned in books like Men Are From Bars, Women Are From Penis. I'm sure the library would be interested in a form of book series. So having read that into public session, let's move on to old business, which is committee reports. Um. Which I think I'm going to read out the committee names because I am not sure who is chair of any of the committee I'm on. So we'll start with the report from the nominating committee. Sorry, Sharon. Go to your hand raised.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you mention that that was from Diana?
No, I did not, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, that was public comment from Diane Lortella. Thank you. I should have noted your hand sooner, but I was switching screens. Um, so the nominating committee, do we know which of you two was chair? We seem to have lost Claudia. Christina. Which of you was the chair? You're on mute.
Sorry, I was not on nominating, I don't think.
That was the one for selecting the 11th commission member?
Uh, yeah. I don't believe we've, Claudia, oh, we did lose her. Yeah, no, you know what? I'm kind of embarrassed. I'm not sure we had met or if we did. I'm not recalling. I'm going to check my email real quick.
Okay, I'm concerned about moving on with this meeting because we have now lost quorum.
Yeah.
Um. Let me email Claudia real quick. This is the problem with Zoom meetings. I thought with eight, we had a pretty solid forum.
Oh, my God, I'm so embarrassed, Anna. Claudia did email you and I on March 24th about meeting and I don't see if, I don't see a response on my end, clearly.
I wouldn't have responded because I'm not part of that committee.
So then it was just she and I, so that's on, that's on us, sorry about that.
Okay.
We will most certainly meet and have a report by next meeting.
Okay. All right, I just shot her an email. What we really need is for Jasmine to get Michelle a list of all of our phone numbers. So I'll ask her about that, I guess, or do you want to, Michelle?
Well, Jasmine's on, so, so yeah, I'll follow up with her.
Not that Jasmine.
Oh, okay.
Jasmine Prezzy. Jasmine, Princess Kay.
Okay, yeah, I'll send her an email.
Yay, all right, we got Claudia back. All right, we're returning to the meeting now we have quorum. Oh, now we've got extra quorum, good. Shannon, I would like to note for the record that Shannon O'Toole. I can't say your last name, Shannon, can you say it?
Giandurko.
Giandurko has joined the meeting at 7:32 and Claudia Connor rejoined the meeting at 7:32.
I'm so sorry, I have no idea.
Action issues happen. So we were having a report from the nominating committee. Christina was saying you hadn't met yet, is that accurate?
That's on me, Claudia emailed me and I failed to respond. Feel, anybody on the committee, if I'm on a committee with you, don't hesitate to poke me if you haven't heard back. So Claudia, I'll follow up with some times this week, for this week.
Okay.
Does that happen?
Yeah, I think everyone's kind of in an intermediary point at this point, so I expect our reports are all going to be kind of process oriented. So the next one on the agenda is the research committee. Who was made chair of that one?
So the chair for the committee, Sarah Random. She's not here today, so I'll share the report with the, with the commission.
Thank you.
Sure, so we met on April 4th and we have a few notes. So first of all, Sarah Random will be sharing the committee. We decided to create the objectives of what our committee was going to do, which is really to develop a baseline of the issues we want to focus on and where is Norwalk currently on these issues. So what we need to do is to learn from the community, what are the needs of women and other unprivileged members. We do need more representation, advocacy and support. So what we want to do is to create a survey that will ensure that whatever we do at the commission is driven, driven by the real needs of the community. Not the, what the commission thinks people need, actually getting the community to tell us what they need. So we were thinking about using some sort of a collaboration with the communities we serve and establishing this baseline to measure improvements achieved by the work of the commission to guide our agenda. So the steps that we decided we are going to take is first to capture the topics from the commission that we want to concentrate on. So the idea is that we will create a large list of different issues that we will research regarding issues that gender, on gender inequality and needs for women and other underprivileged members of the community. So then we will present this list to the committee and do not try to decide what areas we should concentrate on. And then after we get the feedback from the commission, we will design a survey and define what kind of platform we will be using for that. After we have the research done, we will also do some focus groups to get more qualitative information. So the steps was to connect with the city to find what current tools have been used as distribution channels for the city. We did hear back and were advised to hold down into running a survey right now because it seems like the members of the community have been receiving a lot of different surveys from other commissions. So they ask us to hold down for a little bit, so we have to follow up on that and see what we are going to do.
Part of that is also because the Gender Inequity Commission is coming and a lot of the surveys will likely have some crossover.
Exactly, so there may be some.
Sorry, the Equity and Justice Commission, whatever.
So there may be some overlap, so we will follow up and see where, where, you know, where we land with that. We also decided that we will be looking at what surveys exist out there in other commissions throughout the country. And finally, we did decide to have an ongoing meeting for this committee the first Monday of every month. So that's the report.
That sounds great. Any discussion on any of that?
Yeah, I would just say, Michelle, since you were on a women's commission elsewhere, maybe if you have, if you're, if that commission did do a survey or you have thoughts about content, either from work there or just in general, that would be great. We could let you know, you could join the next committee meeting or just, you know, share it by email, so just to flag that.
Okay, yeah, no, that's great. I'll brainstorm as I listen to more ideas.
Great, thanks.
Also, you'd be very useful with regard to how the city can help us with surveys since they'd be the ones doing it or you would, depending on how they decide to land. All right, so. Good.
No, yep, I, I think, the more I understand, I know you're just getting your research together, but your timeline too for, for that research, I think is, is key. And then, yeah, I'll keep listening for exploring ideas.
And we'll certainly look forward to seeing your list of priorities. I'm excited to see that. So that sounds great. All right, so the next one is the diversity committee, which I know Sharon very kindly offered to chair. Thank you, Sharon.
Hi, you're welcome. Okay, so for the diversification of boards and commissions committee, which is the official name, we held a meeting on April 6th. Our committee includes myself as chair, Commissioner Testa-Buzzi, Commissioner Giandurko, Chair Keegan and Commissioner Prezzy. We established a monthly meeting day of the first Monday of the month. And we're working to put together actually a brief presentation, something that we can use for stakeholders when we look to partner with the city. And so I have new glasses and they're awfully strong. Okay, so the presentation will include current data of boards and commissions in regards to gender and race. And it will make a case for why we should diversify boards and commissions. It will include a strategy to increase and institutionalize gender and racial diversity on boards and commissions. And lastly, it will have some sort of tentative timeline that we can all work towards. We set up a shared drive online and that's how we're all going to start working together. And I think I sent out an email to those not on the committee. And if you guys want to add to that, that old, those two folders that I sent, please, please do. Um, let's see, what else? Yeah.
Did we send it to Michelle? Because if not, I think we should.
Nope, I can send that to you. Yeah. And so when our presentation is ready, we'll share the draft with you, which might be next month, if you feel like that's appropriate. That's our update. Any questions?
Claudia, was that you having something to say or just you gesturing?
Me giving a thumbs up and saying, great, while on mute.
That's better than my wild gestures when my cat gets my hand again. All right, so moving on, new business. I think Commissioner Testa-Buzzi wanted to raise an issue of discussion of the playing fields for girls' sports, so over to you.
Hello, everyone. I think I had sent an email out to the group and I, you know, I just, I'm not sure what direction next to go in, right? I also don't want to always depend on the form of social media to, to take direction or to take guidance. But it certainly, I think, catches a temperature and there's def, and quite honestly, I actually, I mean, these are the fields I grew up playing softball. The only sport I could play growing up on the fields were field hockey and softball. And that was in the mid 80s, my God. But I, you know, ironically, I actually remember discussing this issue way back when with Parks and Rec in the 80s, which is a little scary. Actually, that's terrifying. Anyway, I just, there's, and I, and fast forward, I have had two boys who have grown up on these fields. And just seeing sort of the inequity of the options of the girls' fields. And I'm not going to cast broad, you know, sweeps until we collect some information, right? And we collect some data, not just the pundits on social media. So I guess I'm wondering what the direction would be from those of you that have been on commissions before. What would be really the first step to gather some information and look into this further?
Before we get into the first step, you've given some broad strokes. Can you give some specifics about the inequities you're concerned about? And then we can go on to steps, I think.
And I think part of that is, and others jump in, but part of what I was understanding is that some of the girls' softball fields were just not being monitored and taken care of as properly as the baseball fields, which are predominantly men, young men playing. Now, I don't know why that is. It could be that the parents, because I know we would always help take care of the fields on our own time as parents for baseball, so I don't know if that wasn't happening. So I, I still need more information.
Now, are these the school fields, are they Parks and Rec fields? What fields are we talking about?
It may be a combination, but again, I, that's why I said, I put it out there hesitantly, because I think this is all information we need to be able to have the conversation about the perceived and or real inequities.
Okay. Hannah?
Um, so it's a couple pieces of puzzle. I was on Parks and Rec when I was on the council, so I've got a little bit background there. I grew up playing on the fields as, as well. And I happened to know the family that, Sharon, I think you screenshot the Facebook post and I happened to know that. Oh, okay, maybe Christina did.
It might have been me, yeah.
I happened to know that family, so I reached out to them just to try to get an understanding. So let me start with the Parks and Rec hat. I know whenever parents try to help maintain the fields and the intent is always to help.
Oh, yeah, they mess it up.
There's always pushback because of the, the staff of, of Parks and Rec and their contracts and what they're supposed to be paid for. And there's a lot of red tape that I really feel there shouldn't be, but that's always the answer. And then in talking to the family that's dealing with it, like, the girls are playing, and I can get clarity on exactly which fields it is happening at, but I know the girl is on the varsity team over at Norwalk High. So they're practicing, you know, at Norwalk High and playing at Norwalk High and there's, there's a lot of goose remnants left behind. Again, flipping back to the Parks and Rec hat, when I was on the council, we had the same problem at the beach.
Right, exactly.
Couple of different ways to go about it. There are some more aggressive ways that we never moved forward with and that has to do with disrupting their, like, life cycle with their nests, which I'm pretty sure were past that window of like the spring season. But then the other part that we've used in the past, which I think to good results, is the dogs. It's a private company that comes in with like herder dogs and they just constantly chase them. And the geese will eventually just move on, move on to somewhere else. I can, I'm happy to reach out to Parks and Rec and see if that's still a procedure that they're using, because like I said, it definitely did work at the beach. And see kind of if that can be done or better yet, why isn't it being done? If the boys have no complaints, why are the girls, you know, dealing with the goose remnants? I just didn't want to reach out to anybody on behalf of us without us discussing it.
Right, right.
So I just kind of held back to wait for us to discuss it this evening.
And that's probably common across all the fields. I mean, I could tell, I could say that's definitely common, whether it's a soccer field, whether it's a girl's softball field, whether, you know, so something like that might be really common across the board.
Yeah, and it could be that they were on the boys' field, so they shoot them away and they found their ways. Happens to be the girls' field, you know, I mean, they're, they're animals, but it doesn't make it okay what's going on.
Right, I think part of it was also the upkeep of the, the, like, the infield and the pitching rounds and that kind of thing, which are, which are specific to softball, so.
Yeah, I know the field up at, Emily did softball last spring up at, um, the field at Kendall. And you couldn't even see the dirt. There was so much grass in the infield and there was just like this mound of dirt in the middle of the field.
Right, right.
You know, everybody was surprised when the entire league got there, the first Saturday morning, everybody was, oh, we didn't know, you know, like, come on. You assign the field, so you should have assigned somebody to check the field before everybody got there. So sorry, I mean, I'm happy to reach out to Parks and Rec and just see what the current procedure is, where we're at. But like I said, I didn't want to do that out of turn before we all discussed it here tonight. And I can copy, I.
Okay, so.
However, many of us want to be on the email, you know, I can copy all non-forward responses, however we want to go at it.
So it seems like, first off, we need to get more data.
Yeah.
So first, I think probably what we want to know, we should make a list of what we want to know and go from there. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, I think we need to know from both sides. We need to know what fields the families are complaining about to understand where the issue is. And then from the flip side, we need to understand the procedure being followed by Parks and Rec or not being followed. You know, have they, can't, you know, due to COVID, did they cancel the contract with the dogs? I don't know. It could happen, you know, but I think we need to, I think our job in this is to hear from both sides and find that middle ground, not just the keyboard warriors and not lashing deep Ben Parks and Rec. You know, we've got to figure out where the truth lies.
Exactly, and I, and if this, and I think the other piece of it too is identify if it is indeed an issue to begin with. But when some, you know, I'm always of the mindset that, you know, people just miss parking lot chatter. Well, when everybody's talking about something in the parking lot, it's worth asking and inquiring about and again.
The thing, it could be as simple as asking the question and maybe it's only being discussed there and nobody knows where to take it or they're taking it to social media and it's not getting to the right people who could fix it.
Correct.
Claudia, I'm seeing your hand raised.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Shannon, thank you. And when you reach out to folks, it would be great to ask open-ended questions, like, so that we, so, you know, so that we're not sort of presupposing that the, you know, geese droppings are the only problem, but like that there are other sort of, you know, ignoring fields or, you know, where the girls play, et cetera. So just ask open-ended, that would be great to get as much information as possible.
Yeah, I, I thought the idea of asking which fields had the most complaints about them is really smart, because that's open-ended and also lets us. Yeah, I thought the idea of asking which fields had the most complaints about them is really smart because that's open ended and also lets us identify the complaint fields. I'm wondering if we should also ask how the scheduling works. And how it's determined what fields are used for what. Then the procedures for cleaning the fields. Do we have other things we think we should look into? And Shannon, if this is too much for you, say so and we can also, Michelle can ask some things too.
Yeah, no, I'm just jotting down notes so I can just fire off a nice bullet list.
Are there other things we need to know at this point? Sharon?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if this is just the tip of the iceberg. I know that there's been a lot of talk with Ryan McMahon's head of athletics, John Cross. And the law and what fields are what, like, there's a much bigger picture. This is just odd. And I don't know if you'd want to talk to the head of the athletics. I'm also a little concerned that we should be careful not to overstep our role as well. I don't know how you want to. Handle that, but.
Sorry, I think Shannon, really good question to that point. I was on mute and so nobody heard me talk to myself. Is how many, how many? Because the only sports that requires, well, if I remember, any the girl lacrosse players, I don't know if they have the same fields. The same lines and the same types of fields as. As the boys lacrosse, because I know there's differences in the game. Soccer, it's all the same. Obviously softball, baseball, it's different. So I do wonder how many of our sports facilities are for women only. Sports, you know, like if we find we have 10 baseball fields and two softball fields. I feel like that isn't our purview to say, well, does, you know, do we have enough young women to warrant more fields? That kind, those kind of questions I would think to Sharon's point are in our purview and is important to know is just to get a an assessment. Of what fields are used for what. The scheduling, Anna, sometimes is up to the leagues. To work with Parks and Rec. As opposed to the, right, so I know there's a nuance to that, having been involved in that, but.
I'm sure there's many nuances. That's why I'd like to know their procedure that we can determine.
And Sharon, to your point, I do think. I think there is a little bit of a tip of the iceberg scenario forming here, but I also think. We might be able to get an important, easy win for these girls. Because this should not be this hard. There might be a much bigger issue because I know with like the Norwalk High Construction Plan. The fields are going to be disruptive and what is that going to look like? That might be. A bigger picture for us to look at, but I think this one. Could be something as as simple as us speaking for the parents saying, what's the deal? How can we fix this? And it could be resolved hopefully very easily.
And I think we won't know whether this is what we can do, whether it's appropriate for us or not until we have more information.
Yeah.
So I think getting the information and then having this on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss further.
Shannon, I feel like I raised it and then you've got all the work. How can I help you?
No, I'm fine. There's going to be other stuff that I have no clue how to do. So let me take one that I I have the roadmap of what I know to do on this one, so I'll take this one and I'll save one for you.
All right, well, whatever I can do and there are, I do, you know, I have some, you know, relationships with other girl. Family, other families that have daughters that I know would really be on both spectrums and kind of all different perspectives, so. Just shoot me an email, whatever I can do to help.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, so any more discussion on this one? Okay. Sharon raised an issue over email of the possibility of us getting ourselves involved in the legislative session. It's a little late for us to do that this year, but if everyone's okay with it, I'd like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting so we can discuss. That. Okay, all right, so I'm going to add that to next month's agenda and we'll, go ahead, Claudia, sorry.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say, I know Sharon, you mentioned if Lucy Daythen and then also Stephanie Thomas.
Thank you.
If, if, I know, as you said, Stephanie's running for Secretary of State of the state, I think, right? But if she could, I mean, if they could come at some point to kind of talk to us about, I know many of you know the process, but. That the process, but also kind of their insights on what might be coming up and where where they think we could make a difference. I think that would be fantastic.
Sorry, let me let Sharon talk about what she raised earlier because that would be better.
No, that was, that was good. I had noticed there were some bills HB 5261 about reproductive health care and. HB 5272 about menstrual products in high schools. It's like a lot of stuff going on, but the session's almost over. So basically, I was just proposing to bring them on, as Claudia had said, and to let them talk to us and build a relationship with them so that the next session. We can kind of have this relationship and be able to leverage this commission on helping bills go through. So thanks, thanks for bringing it up, both of you.
Thank you, Claudia. And Sharon, more Sharon. All right, do we have any other new business? Okay, shorter meeting than last time unless someone's raising their hand. Okay. Some of you have backgrounds where it's hard to see the hand. Um, all right, so great work. I know this is more of a process meeting and we're all kind of in intermediary stages, but this is all really exciting. I'm really looking forward to what all we get out there and very excited to have you on board, Michelle.
Yeah, so excited. You guys are doing a really, really exciting stuff. I think as I hear about needs or potential ideas, I'll share them out. I'm obviously on a learning curve over here, but it sounds like you have your your hands on a lot of great issues, so thank you all.
Thank you so much, Shannon, for taking on the data gathering on this one.
No problem, no problem.
Okay, anything else? Can I get the most important motion of a meeting? Sharon got it. Who's got the second?
A second.
That was a motion to adjourn, seconded by Yvonne Zuko. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you all. I'm looking forward to seeing you all next month, if not sooner in some cases.
Thank you.
Great evening.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.